Okay, well, I'm gonna call this to order.
Okay.
I would like to call to order our virtual regular meeting of the Roxbury zoning commission via Zoom. Monday, 8, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Seating of members. We have our regular members, Kim Tester, Alan Johnson, and Jim Conway. We will seat Candy Valare for Elaine Curley. And we will seat Bill Horgan for Dave Miller.
Okey doke.
We have five seated members.
Great.
And before we get into the agenda, I'd just like to remind everyone, it's a Zoom meeting. You, I would like to have you state your name when you speak and don't speak over each other. Everybody will have fair time, identify yourself, and everybody will have a chance, we'll have a good meeting. So, first order of business, approval of minutes of our regular meeting, May 11th. And you've seen the minutes. If there's any corrections or amendments?
Yes, there are a few places where Elliot Davis is stated, his last name is stated as David.
Okay.
Okay.
Goes back and forth on that. So I think the first one is at the bottom of page one. Right under the title, Mine Hill Distillery, this petition by Elliot David, it should be David.
Got it, yeah.
And then, there's another one, I think it's the next page, second motion, petition by Elliot David.
Got it, yeah.
And then, I think there's another one.
I was trying to change his name.
Yeah, I think it's we got equal here.
Rather have David than Davis.
So, under communications, A, cover letter from Elliot Davis dated petition to amend, okay, and then says Elliot David, second sentence.
Got it, okay. Wow.
So I think those were the ones that I saw.
Thank you.
Looks fine.
Yeah, no, Karen, I sent you a correction.
Candy, you'll have to state it there, I don't remember.
Candy Valare, yeah.
Change it, you guys have to change it.
Okay.
Sorry?
Page two, Z E O report.
Yeah.
Z E O, John Cody Gabe, there should be space between Cody and Gabe.
Oh, is the space, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. We are technically perfect now.
Yes.
Cheryl, do you want to just? Cheryl?
Hi Cheryl.
Her mic is muted.
I see that, okay.
Cheryl is joining at what time, let's see. 7:35, okay.
Not seated, so, okay.
Right.
How do we get Cheryl to unmute her mic?
She's gonna have to do it herself.
I did it, can you hear me?
She's got it.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yes.
It was attached to my, it was connected to my headphones, so, sorry about that.
It's always confusing.
For me, anyway.
It's like the opposite.
Okay, we're gonna continue on, we need a motion to approve the minutes of our May 11th meeting as amended.
I motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, Kim Tester.
Alan Johnson, second.
Alan, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are good, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move the Z E O report a little further down. I don't wanna disappoint you, John, but it's
I'm fine with that.
And then, we're going on to item number five of the agenda, and we're gonna go to the second one, accessory apartments. We discussed, started to discuss this, maybe you all folks remember, back in January, February, about the size and the scale of accessory apartments as compared to primary residences, being 50% maximum. And I believe it's 450 square feet minimum. So we're looking at accessories not within the house at the moment, accessories outside of the house, which is actually another residence. And what we're looking into is the fact that there's a lot of property property owners with, for an example, 2,000 square foot house. And the largest accessory they can build, 1,000 square feet. And obviously, that's not quite large enough. And then, if they decide to build a bigger house and call the original primary the accessory, change the status of the new one to primary, they would have to build a 4,000 square foot house. So, anybody owning a 2,000 square foot house in town has two choices. Build a tiny little 1,000 square footer for the kids, or build a great big 4,000 square footer for themselves. And I think the thought, I talked with Bill Horgan a bit about this, and Bill was talking about it in February, is to delete that 50% number. So basically, coming right out and say it, if you wanna build an accessory, you can build it any size you want, and you call one the accessory and one the primary, you only get one. So you're gonna have a primary and an accessory, whatever you categorize them, any size you want, we don't, because nobody can possibly, there's a lot of houses in town that can't possibly build an accessory for in-laws or children or what have you. I just wanted to bring that up to the commission and see what you thought.
So, I, when this came up originally in our meets, Kim Tester, in our meeting, I used our property as an example, because we have a 1,500 square foot ranch that was on it when we purchased it. And at the time, the regulation said footprint, that's different than what it says now. So we had to build a house that was 3,000 square foot or bigger. And thankfully, costs of building weren't as high in the late 90s as they are now, and we did it. And, but it ends up being a house that's too big, as we got older, we wanted everything to be on one level. So now, the regulation states that it's a, it doesn't say footprint, it says floor area. So it's a little better, but not by much, so I agree. And I would say that there is also a definition that would have to be altered if we went for any size, but the suggestion might be to say something like equal to or lesser than the primary unit. So that the primary residence still remains the larger unit, or nothing, you know, you can state which one it is, but generally, the bigger one's gonna be the primary unit.
Correct.
So, because it does say in the definitions that a detached subordinate building, use of which is customarily incidental and subordinates, they kept the term subordinate is in there. So it's just something to think about as we, as we go ahead, but we could certainly remove the percentage, and then that would alleviate that. I would be in favor of keeping the not less than 450 square feet.
Definitely.
Yeah, because that's, I wouldn't wanna see anything smaller. So that's, that's my two cents.
Okay. Bill?
I did some research in, as a company called Houzz, H-O-U-Z-Z, it's gonna, it's an American website and an online community, you know, while landscaping, interior design, architecture, home improvement. They have about 1,000 employees and they're 17 million users. They did an article and they came up with an optimum size, they call it the Goldilocks zone house, for a family of four with two dogs, and that came out to 1600 to 1800 square feet. So, that's not too far from 1,500, we could use like a 1,700 average to limit, if we wanted to limit the size of a, of an accessory building. And then maybe when the main, 3,400 feet or more, then you can throw in the 50%, but I think by eliminating just the 50%, that solves the whole problem.
Yes.
I don't think anyone's gonna, people aren't gonna be building 50,000 square foot, or 5,000 square foot accessory buildings. I don't think there's much risk.
Okay.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan Johnson. So the way I understand it is, everybody who owns a house, no matter what size their lot is, can basically put a second home on there, you know, we can double the, I mean, all of a sudden, you've got two, you've got a three acre lot, now you have two houses on it, so each house is on an acre and a half. You double the density and potentially double, I know it's not gonna happen, but
Correct. It's got a, it's got a perk test, it's got to have to meet all the other requirements to put that house there.
Now, are we kind of defeating the whole concept of, you know, if you have four acre zoning, and now it's become two acre zoning, because you can build a second home, you can't sell it independently of the main house, but but you have an income-producing property on it, on your, on your property.
Correct, yes you do.
Well, maybe income, yeah, they could put your
Depends on
in-laws in there, and they may not pay you a dime, but
Yeah, it can be a rental property, it can help alleviate the low-income housing issue. It can do a lot of things, if the land will support it. Three acres or four acres, depends on what type of lot you currently have. I can show you some examples in town where the three acre lot can support two houses. It perked, the wells were fine, they just can't sell it, it's a rental, or for family members.
Or an Airbnb.
Well, that, we won't go there, but
Well, somebody's gonna do that, and
Well, that's, that's a rental, Airbnbs are short-term rentals, you can have long-term rentals, it's a rental. We're providing housing for either in-laws, children, or rentals, or whatever. And all we're doing is changing the size, because some, a lot of people have big homes, and they can, their second home can be large enough. But then, there's a lot of, my house is 1,800 square feet, my son's house is 1,800 square feet. We're stuck in the middle, there's nothing we can do if we wanted to build something for the grandchildren or the kids.
Yeah, let me ask you a question. Legally, can you have an accessory apartment or home on one well for the two structures?
I believe the answer would be yes.
And you could have a one septic system then, as long as it
No, I don't think septic.
Even if you had it big enough to accommodate all the bathrooms and all the number of bedrooms.
John Cody, you would have to get a modification from Newtown Health to do that. That would be, you know, that's out of our jurisdiction.
If it's attached, physically attached to, if you put a big addition on and rent it out, that half, that whole, now you have a two-family house, then that would qualify.
Due place.
Yeah, a little different, yeah.
I mean
Yeah, I think, this is Kim Tester, I think
Anyway, we're just, the number we're trying to get rid of here, 50% thing.
We've lost Jim's sound.
So, I just wanted to throw that out.
John Cody, Jim, do you know of any other towns that permit that, we could pull further regs or look at those?
Oh, no, this is, I don't know why this town even wrote that in, to be honest with you. I don't know why we did the 50%, it was done a long time ago. Losing my audio?
Well, it was fine.
There, Jim, I heard you.
Okay. Anyway.
We're just, we're just fine tuning a little bit, because this exists for many, many people in town, we're just trying to have it exist equally for all.
Correct, correct.
You know, and the benefit of accessory, Bill Horgan, the benefit accessory homes, first of all, it's not a subdivision, it increases property value, it increases tax revenue, it brings young families into town, the potentially young families into town, which helps Roxbury, helps schools. It's additional income to the property owners, it's especially important to retirees like me, old people, and the young people too. It's more justification for staying in the town, I don't wanna stay in town, live in a 3,500, 4,000 square foot house. So, this just, what we're talking about, and we're just trying to make it fair for everyone in town.
I agree. But as I said, this is Kim Tester, as I said before, I wouldn't want to just say they could build any size, I would say at least a statement, as I suggested, or something like that, equal to or lesser than the primary unit. And what I noticed, what I did notice in the regulations under, you know, section 14, is that it goes back and forth between talking about the primary unit and the original unit. And I think we have to be more consistent there, and I think when it says original, it really does mean primary, based on what I can tell. We can kind of take a look at that and see, but
What, what, what reg, what reg were you looking at there, Kim?
14.3, 0.4.
Okay. That's where it goes back and forth?
Yeah, it goes back and forth in the 14s.
Okay, in the 14s, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What
Pretty old.
Would it be fair to consider increasing the 50% to, let's say, 75% or 80% or a bigger percent of the, it seemed, it would seem strange to me to build a second home bigger than the, than primary home.
Well, let me interject just a bit, a lot of people can build the second one larger and change the designation, the accessory. But the only way that happens is if the, the new one is twice the size of the, the old one, correct, Kim?
Yes.
Nobody's hearing me.
I'm hearing you, your lips aren't moving though, we hear you.
Sorry.
But if you, if you made it, I mean, I, I don't know why I'm hung up on it, but I just think maybe if you made it
We're jumping back and forth here.
If you made it, if you made it 80%, then, then they'd have to build a, the new house would be, have to be 20% bigger than the, the other house, and then they changed the, the nature of it.
Anyway, there's no urgency on this, it's just something that we started discussion on, and I wanted to continue discussion. I think the whole 50% thing is just not needed, it's just not needed. We can do better.
This is Kim, I think it would be more equitable to make the change. You know, we're lucky that we were able to do what we did in the late 90s, but I think it's hardship, honestly, for those who are to move ahead with a plan and unable to do so.
So you, you, you think, Kim, you think you should just don't mention a percent, just say you can build an accessory apartment, or freestanding apartment, or of any size?
No, this is Kim again, I think that it shouldn't be larger than the primary unit, so
But if you wanna build a bigger one and call that the primary unit, that's okay too.
Yes, we did that. Yes.
So then you're really not limiting the size.
You are
Alan's issue is maybe, I may be speaking for him here, is that maybe we just should put a limit on what, how large
In every
the building could be, it could be 3,000 square feet, we could choose something large in case somebody wants to build something bigger, but maybe just limit it in some way.
This is Kim again, then you're telling people they can't build a large house, and in this town, that I don't see how that's gonna fly. So if you have, happen to have a cottage or something on your property, and you want to build a house of any size, you're able to do that, because it fits the zoning regulations, so that's
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, if you had a 1,200 square foot small cottage and you had on a four acre lot, you could tear it down and build your big house, but maybe you just as soon build your big house and the little house is structurally sound.
Correct.
What's wrong with it?
Exactly, but this, this Kim again, this change would not force someone to build a house double the size. I think everyone's thinking about the fact that it's the smaller end, but I think people really get hit when they're thinking about doing something a little larger, and, but not wanting to build that 2,400 square foot house as opposed to something like
18, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I understand, I'm inclined to dump the 50% rule on I don't, I don't see any particular danger, I don't think a lot of people, frankly, are rushing out to build a a rental property on their own property, you know, I can see it as an in-law or for your kids, but yeah.
Okay.
You want me to come up with
I'd like to move
Language?
This, and maybe next, it's a minor change, we're just deleting the 50% thing. Other than that, I don't even think we have to go to any other place.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it's John Cody, it's gonna go into a whole bunch of spots, minimal requirements for lot size. We might have to eliminate that 250 foot circle if it incorporates that.
I, John?
Yeah.
The 250 foot circle
For each house.
No.
Just for some possibilities, I think.
That's road, that's road frontage stuff, 200 If your accessory apartment, you can put that on your lot.
All right, I was just thinking, like, as Gil would look at things, I'm looking for the bones in the road. It may not exist at all.
This has been done, you drive up Chalby's Road, you go to the Crabtree House. It's the 250 foot road frontage, and out and back of Art's house is Hazel's house. And it's a straight, long lot, and they put her house is just the 50%, because they had to file, go with that, done, and she does separate, and it depends on what the soil will accept. But right now, you can
Ooh.
Well. We've lost Jim's audio.
Again, just to jump
Nobody heard that.
I was just thinking
We did not hear the last bit of what you
All right, someday, when we get that, business is ridiculous. Has anybody heard me?
We've heard most of it.
Anyway, it can't be done in this format.
Well, every, all the other regulations have to be conformed to, all the zoning and health and setbacks and
Yeah, that's what I was, John Cody, thinking along those lines, where it's gonna touch, may or may not.
Anyway, it's up to the commission, it's a suggestion. Forget it.
No, we can hear you.
No, we can hear you.
I mean, it's, we're in and out, in and out all night long, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, it's kind of hard, isn't it?
It's ridiculous, but, so, I just wanted to open everyone's minds to that. I think it's a move forward to increase the housing in town, and help out with housing.
So this is Kim, so to move that forward, would we do, John, would you do some research on that then? Is that to see, I'm asking the question about
John Cody, I'm just thinking, where this is gonna touch, we'll have to look at everybody, we could do a quick search on the, online, whatever, to where it hits our regulations as far as that. I'd like to find one where I can copy it and just plagiarize them, or find some useful information from another town, I'll look into that. Yeah, I'll gather up all I can.
I don't think any, I don't think any other town uses a 50%.
Yeah, well, just, you know, the 50% isn't a concern, I don't think so, I'll just scope around and see everything that I can find from all over the, from all over the place, so we can compile something and put together and present it. I don't have a concern with it.
Okay, so then, this Kim again, so that we can look at something next time, I could write up something too.
Yeah, yeah, again, just send me whatever you can find, and I'll, I'll see what I can find, kick it back and forth and come up with some sort of a, I'm sure Bill, Bill will jump in there too, and, you know, we have to gather everything we can. Now we just have to make it saleable.
Yep. Good.
All right, moving on. So, adaptive reuse of non-conforming barns, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
For a moment?
We can.
For a split moment. Here's another, what issue we brought up back in January and February, and it was dropped because of all this. And again, this is in to encourage the use of a lot of, because they're non-conforming. So, what we discussed, and again, Bill, and I talked about it a couple times, is the proportion of a non-conforming building allowing a reuse for the conforming portion. For an example, I'm sitting right now in a barn that's a barn, and it's been transformed, but it's perpendicular to the road. The frontage is less than 50 feet, only by 10 feet. The rest of the barn is 120 feet long, a lot of wasted barn space. The first 10 feet's non-conforming, the other 110 or whatever, does conform. So we're just talking, what if we allowed the conforming portion of the barn to be added on to? added on to like the houses by a percentage? Change the facade or, or even use them for accessory apartments, which currently you can't. And I wanted to bring that up to the commission too, because there's a lot of old barns in town. They set too close to the road. Some of them are weight. Now, the other barn on my property wouldn't work because it's parallel to the road and the entire thing is within the setback.
Jim, how about a barn that's 10 feet from the property?
Two examples right here. One would work, one would work.
Um, John Cody.
Jim, we've lost you on audio.
John Cody, Jim, we're pretty much there with 31010. We could do that. And that goes right into 438. The only difference thing we may have.
All right.
Jim, again, not coming through.
Yeah, we did not, we didn't hear the last part of what you said, Jim. Can you hear us?
I think he froze.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah. Well, this is John Cody. I'll just pipe in for a second. If everyone wants to read 31010 for the non-conforming, we're pretty much there. All that requires is a special permit to do this. It also refers us back to 438 for the adaptive reuse of barns. That contains a lot of information. We'll have to strike a couple of lines in there to get that done. But it's, it's close. It's real close according to what Jim's proposing. Again, special permit. One thing is the size of the structure. They don't permit that as a 4.383A. But all that can be figured out, hammered into place if we want to go down that road.
The only issue that I don't see that's addressed is additions.
Yeah. See, that's right there. 4.3.83A. You can't, you can't increase the size. That's typical non-conforming.
That's exactly what I'm bringing. The issue I am bringing up this evening is the conforming portion. If somebody wanted to add a bump out or something like that.
I thought you were talking about the, the conforming.
We want to allow the conforming portion to be increased. I mean, I've read.
This is Kim. John, can you tell me which, which one, which number you're looking at?
John, if you go to 4.3.8, right there, that's the adaptive reuse after you get from 31010. We just have to tweak that a little bit if they want to do bump outs or something like that. You know, um, that'll throw us back here, but yeah, that's where, that's where the rubber hits the road. 3, 3, Alpha and Bravo barnyard. Again, special permit. It's not that much, not that much at all if we wanted to do that.
Looks like, this is Bill, looks like it addresses adjoining property setbacks and not road setbacks. Which is a hard part anyway, because we don't want to approach our neighbor, but.
Yeah, I obviously want to go towards the, towards the violation or John, sorry.
So this is Kim. So if somebody wanted to, um, you know, put a, I don't know, a dormer on or something like that, that this would not allow it, right?
Expansion, John Cody, expansion of non-conformity, no.
Okay.
That's exactly what we're trying to address. We allow it in residences, we, a house, we just gave approval. 25% of the footprint can be added on a non-conforming house. You want to allow that for barns.
I see. It makes sense to be consistent.
Well, I, I'm just bringing it up because we allow it for houses. Residences, any non-conforming residence can add on up to 25% of the footprint. I just want to know if we want to do something like that for non-conforming barns.
This is Kim. So, I mean, generally with a historic barn, they're going to have to renovate to keep it standing. So it's not, it won't be touched. And I, I think that makes sense if, because you're, if you're going to be encouraging the reuse and restoration. I think this should, as long as, I guess the big thing is though, we're talking about historic building. I guess it's different if it's historic.
Basically, any non-conforming barn. Has everybody got me? Any non-conforming barn is historic. Because it was, if it's non-conforming, it was built before 1960. And it's in the book, so to speak. That's what we use. So we can put that together. It's historic, non-conforming. But the only portion I want to address is the conforming portion.
Okay. So this is Kim again. So if you look at special requirements, see, this is 4.3.8. And number three, special requirements. B, the commission shall determine that the proposed adaptive future significantly alter the footprint, essential character or immediate context of the historic barn. So it's not saying that it can't change.
John Cody, the first one above the egg.
Does it say that? Oh.
Shall no way increase the degree of non-conformity.
Oh, look at that.
So that would have to be struck, you know, again.
I just read what I wanted to hear. That's all.
We all.
I know.
Wish it was that easy.
All right. I'm sorry, guys. There's no way this is successful. We're not getting anywhere.
No.
Yeah, we are. We are.
Draft or strike that from the minutes, or not from the minutes, from our regs. I don't think that's impossible at all.
And what are we striking?
We'd have to go with the expansion, 4.3.83A. If the barn is non-conforming structure, the adaptive reuse shall no way increase the degree of non-conformity. If we leave that, and then we bounce back to 310. Love to touch that a little bit, but.
I mean, it's basically where I'm coming from, if you guys got me, is the portion of the structure that is conforming can be added on to. And that's to me, not making it more non-conforming because that's a loaded term.
Bigger is more.
I mean, yeah, but if you're making it more non-conforming, you're pushing it closer to the road. We're not doing that. Moving it further away from the road.
Adding on and then away from the road.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, then, John Cody, we'd have to go into 3103 where no non-conforming shall be in large extent at all. We just have to tweak. It's not impossible by any means. We just have to.
Right.
Eliminate, you know, 3103 I see and 438A. Not impossible by any means.
I mean, what I want to try to do is encourage the use of smoothie structure proper fashion. Go to make.
Hi, it's Candy. I think we understood what he said. Yeah, just to make the conforming portion more usable.
Correct.
Yeah, we could do that. We just have to do it. Figure it out, get it done.
Yeah, it's Candy. Yeah, it's probably just as, like you said, John, a simple matter of tweaking some of the language, deleting some, rewording others. So it should be easy.
It's John Cody. It's a reg change. So then we have to have a public hearings in a couple of months for this and that.
Yeah.
Nothing's easy.
All right. One last thing I want to throw in, if you folks can hear me, is here we go to percentages again. What percentage of this structure is conforming? What percentage is non-conforming? I have one structure up here that 80% is conforming and 20% is non. I have another structure right next to it that none of it is conforming. It's all the whole, it runs parallel to the road and the whole thing is too close to the road. So we need to look at what percentage of the structure is actually conforming. If the, if the whole entire barn is within 50 feet of the road, then I don't want anybody changing that. But if only 25% is close to the road and the other 75%, then we can work with you.
John Cody, yeah, I see that. It's simple because I mean, just go with the 50 or 30 foot setback. And from that vantage point forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, some, some only touch the non-conformity and some are all in it. And the ones that touch it are being wasted.
No, no, that's, it's, it's a great idea, but getting there is going to be a couple of hurdles. We can do it. I don't see why not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, like you say, the barns are wasting away. Let's use them.
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree.
Hi, it's Candy. What do the other towns in the area do about the non-conforming barns and that have portions that are non-conforming and conforming?
They tear them down.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You know what, guys? Why don't, why don't we set a standard for the other towns to call us?
We always, I'm sorry, John Cody, Jim, you know, we always do.
Let the other towns. All right. Anyway, very good. It's a start. It's going to take a little time. It's not going to be fast. The accessory percentage can change quicker than the non-conformities because non-conformities are an issue. They are a big issue. There's a lot of things we brought, we were talking earlier about on a corner lot, you have to determine the front setback and the side setback. It's on two different roads. We have a reg that describes which is considered the front and the side.
The front door is what does, I read that assumption as Bill.
Yeah.
Even if you don't use the front door, that's still the front setback.
Yep. The side setback is adjusted to one half the front setback and one half the side setback. So the front setback is 50 feet, half of that is 25. The side setback is 30, half of that is 15. So 25 and 15 is 40. The side, the side setback now becomes 40 feet instead of 30 feet.
Oh.
How did you see that?
I, I, I didn't make that up, John.
I'm just curious.
That's 3.3 setback.
Sounds like a shell game.
Yeah, have the sum of half the front and half the side determines the new side setback.
Thank you for that.
Wow, that I found it.
That's why, that's why you and I talk once in a while.
This is Kim. Can I make a suggestion for an agenda item to go on that could be sort of simple? I'm not sure if it, I mean, not for tonight, but for next time?
Right.
Is that right? To go back to the, looking at A and instead of a circle going the, to the road boundaries.
Sure. No, all that stuff.
Kim, you're talking about zone A?
Zone A, yeah. Yeah. I was, the word zone couldn't come out of my mouth, so sorry.
That would be fun to do.
Yeah. You know, I just, you know, Bill has done so much work on it already and it's virtually done. And it could be something, you know, because other towns do it and we were, I think we're one of the few that still maintain the circle, which is really not that efficient. And it might, you know, reviewing my information from my book and went, oh my gosh, this is all right here. And it could be something that could be a fairly, I don't know how easy, that's a bad word.
I think we need to continue on like that, just not via Zoom.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Now, we threw out enough fodder for everybody to digest. And I want to stay on these things. These will be on the agenda next meeting and we're going to, you got me? I can't tell if you got me. You got me.
Yeah. So we'll add, we'll add the zone A back on again?
Yes. Yep. Yep. All right. Now, thank you for all that input. And now we're going to go to ZEO report. John?
John Cody, I have two new issues that came up. The weaving complaint next to the singer's about the garage. I got a complaint that they're back in action again. I went there. I didn't see anything. There was no one in the garage, no activity. Talked to Mr. Singer and Mrs. Singer twice so far. This just started like two days ago, three days ago. So that's the latest. Also received a complaint against Mike Rice and his beehives. Apparently there's been a lot of traffic, people picking up stuff there. So I reached out to him. I asked him to come in and do a home enterprise application. He has not responded back yet, but that was just on Friday. So we'll give him another day or so and I'll reach out to him. Busy. We got tons of pools, new houses going in. There's a lot of money being spent. John Blaney made his mark a good month and a half ago of over $100,000. He's going to blow his record high. Blown away by a lot. You know, there are outstanding concerns that I asked you guys to look at was the screening on Baker Road for Earth Artists, 1012 Baker Road. I don't know if anyone out there and has an opinion they'd like to share. I appreciate that.
Can I, John, can I ask a question on Baker Road? What the, his special permit, category two special permit, what was required for screening?
Five foot screening from, from the neighbors.
Abounding property owners?
Correct. As far as the screening towards the, we'll call it the primary house there, that's woods. I mean, I'm not allowed on that property, unfortunately. I don't see an issue with the screening from the back house because it's woods, it's bramble, it's thick. The garage with storage accessory building that is there. Again, if you look at that, the screening goes mostly towards the front house, the primary house, Mark Lowe's. And if the screening is only five feet, you can't account for the deck up above for what he sees there. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, we're going to screen from five feet across, not from a second story down. That's why, you know, when you drive by, if you look down Baker Road, you're going to see equipment. That's the driveway. You can't screen a driveway. If you look at it from across the neighbors' vantage point. I, I, I want to know what you guys see, what your guys' feelings are because I'm sure whatever answer I come up with will be contested.
I was just curious on the screening to the east side of the driveway.
Correct.
Going towards the abounding property owner. Is there any screening there at all?
No, there's, there's a minimal screening there. The, the issue that comes up with that is there's a wood splitter and some wood split there. That, I don't, I can't see having an issue with that because half these people in town have wood splitters. I have, I mean, that is not, I, I can't connect that to the business aspect. It's just, I, it's kind of a stretch. It'd be impossible to prove.
But. If we all read the special permit, wouldn't we all think that that meant screening? Total screening, whether there's a wood splitter there or not?
Good luck with that. I disagree. I have a wood splitter in my yard. I, I mean, I know a million people.
Forget about the wood splitter, screening.
Screening. Well, I, I think it's screened. That's why I asked for other people to get their opinion. I would rather have a. I would rather have a collaboration of information as to my only interpretation.
This is, this is Kim. So I did email John a while back. I actually went by on my horse. Took a ride. And he's right, I went, I could see right down the driveway and I could see everything there. And he, you know, I got back to him and he clarified that you really can't screen the driveway, which I understand. I was a little, I wasn't sure because it looked like there was a bunch of stuff, equipment in front of where, like the primary house was and, you know. And I really couldn't tell what that was. So I, I think I, you know, there was some wood and wood splitter and all that. And I think the confusion might be, you know, for an abiding property owner, what is part of his business and what is personal? And so that's a very difficult thing to draw the line on. And it might be best for us to see the, you know, for us to be able to read the special permit, you know, and what it says, what that statement is or what's included. Is that possible?
Yes.
Looking for that tomorrow. That's simple.
Okay, that would be, I think that would be helpful.
Jim, did you get what I sent you today on that?
I didn't see that, no.
Okay, I sent you the entire.
Okay. Special permit goes with the land. Regardless of what's set in on that land. And if the special permit says screening from abounding property owners, it's not just the back or the one, the west side. It's the entire part of parcel of property that we issued the special permit for. And I can't see how we can not enforce screening on the all, not the driveway, of course. But the other three sides should be five foot trees or five foot fence.
So that's the information I was looking for, John Cody.
Yep. I mean, not just one side and the backside, all three sides, obviously not the front side.
The question, John Cody, the question I have. The convoluted, the business aspect is behind the main, the primary house over a little bridge. That's where that is. The wood splitter is on the primary house side. Are we going to enforce screening for the primary house that? I don't think is part of the special permit and may or may not be. I just don't.
I think the special permit involves the entire lot.
Okay, that's, that's something we'll just have to look into. That's fantastic.
I mean, it involves the lot. If there's a portion of the lot, then we need a map that shows what portion is not involved in the special permit. Special permit goes with the land and we said that piece of land has to be screened.
That is something I will dig into first thing. That is not an issue at all.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to read it right now, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll get back to you with that.
Yeah, this is Kim. I think that would, that would answer a lot of questions because of.
Okay, I'm sorry. Here we go. John Cody, the applicant shall plant enough five foot tall evergreens at the recommended spacing for, for the variety to screen the trucks and trailers in a home enterprise from the view of the neighboring properties. Plannings must be approved by ZEO, representative commission, and maintained by applicant. So to screen the trucks and trailers from the home, in the home enterprise area, that's it, which, yeah, that doesn't help me.
Yep.
I'll forward this to everyone, so everyone can go take a look and.
Well, we kind of know what would solve this.
I know.
We know. And that, you know, what would solve it was to put screening up down that one side. It could be some pretty inexpensive white pine trees. And the whole thing would be solved. It's screening. We said shrubbery trees. It might take, and the spacing can be 10 feet, so it might take 20 of them, if that. And then you're done.
I will try.
I know. Okay, all right.
I don't know what kind of results I'll get, but I will try.
Plant some trees.
Saying that for two years.
I know, I know. Okay, thank you, John.
Oh, no problem.
Chairman's report. No, I've said all I need to say. I have nothing left.
Now you're coming in clear as a bell.
You know, I don't know what happened. I moved the chair away from my booster. I see that there's a lady living in the house where the wifi comes from and she probably was on using her wifi. And that's what happened the last time, because I've had three good Zoom meetings here because nobody was in the house. And I think that doesn't quite send enough signal when we're both on it. And so she must have shut it off. Anyway. Sorry, I apologize for that. I'd like to run a better meeting, but.
You did well.
Communications, communications, Karen, I guess we have none?
No, we did not this time.
So anyway, before we adjourn, next month is this public hearing. And I really, really hope we can do something at town hall. I mean, it is July and everything else is opening up. We might have to change the spacing, whatever. But I would like to seriously look into doing something in person at the town hall for the July public hearing. If we can.
John Cody, I agree. I think this would not work well for a public.
It would be difficult. We'd miss up, we'd miss stuff. So we got to seriously look into that. We'll talk to all the powers to be and get permission to go in there and see what we can do.
We could, John Cody, we could talk to Jimmy and see what ideas he has.
Yep.
He's, he's the wisest kid there.
Because we can spread out, we can. Public can come in, public can come in or listen from, I don't, I don't know how to do it, but I don't, depends on how many are coming. There might only be five. Who knows? But we have to prepare and also this public hearing is not about Elliot. It's about the adoption of a new reg for the entire business zone D. And for distilleries and all that. So he doesn't, he still has to come back and apply for the special permit once we approve it. Then, that's when he, he's on stage. He's not on stage in July. He's on stage in August. Hopefully, if everything goes smoothly, he will submit an application and we can do a public hearing in August for him. Anyway, and that's when he, he shines. But this public hearing is just to adopt this for the entire business zone D. And as far as our two things we kicked around, just give it some thought, what we want to do. I want to do it right. And I think it'd be a step in the right direction for the accessories. Take that percentage away, let people build what they want to build. And try to do something for these old barns so people can use them. Simple. See what happens. All right. Well, if you're all good, and now that mine's working, it's too bad. If we're all good, if anybody has anything they want to interject while we're having our meeting. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Do I have a?
Sorry, Kim Tester, I motion to.
Candy Valeria second.
Candy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care.